It's five o'clock at this time. I'll call the work session for the Perry City Council for April the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one in Georgia. We have a board. Item three is items for review and discussion. Item three A is Department of Public Works. And three A one is stormwater culvert restoration projects. Ms. Fiskner?
Thank you. A recent evaluation of our existing stormwater culverts has brought me here this evening to bring you staff recommendation for repair. It's basically two locations, but three sections which I'll go over. The first, well, these are all brought to you out of the overall evaluation as three prioritized as pipes. So available on your board pack is all of those that were evaluated. The three that I'll present today are prioritized based on location, being that they're under roadways, and then condition, which I'll show you here. So the first location is at Valley Drive near Big Indian Paintball and Mobley Furniture. It's under the roadway there shown, and it is rusting out in the bottom in the pictures you can see here. Prioritized as a priority one. This section is a sixty-five foot wide pipe. Sixty-five width, thirty-seven height, excuse me, and forty-five linear feet metal pipe. The cost to repair is estimated at eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. The next part is two sections in the same location at Houston Lake and Kings Chapel. They're also corrugating metal pipe, sixty-inch diameter, both of them. One section is about eighty linear feet, the other about fifty. These would repair a section up to the Georgia Department of Transportation right away. And they were estimated at fifteen thousand and twenty-four thousand each for those segments. You can see here, they're also rusting out in the bottom as well. The recommended vendor is UAM, which is a local vendor here that has completed successfully completed projects of the city in the past to include the most recent. I think you all remember under Roser Park entryway. They've also done the House and Springs pipe repair and various manhole repairs. So the total that would be requested for these three pipe sections this evening is fifty thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I'll answer any questions that you might have. Sure.
Why would we not get bids on this? Like we do most things. It costs over forty-five minutes, ten thousand dollars?
This is such a specialized trade that there aren't many companies out there that offer this type of service. If you would like for us to try and seek other bids, we can. This is a local vendor in Perry that we've used in the past. That's why we got the quotes from that company. But if you would like, we can try and find some other companies that Mike would be able to offer pricing as well.
I have no problem with this gentleman or company, but I still think we ought to bid.
Okay.
That's a lot of money.
Sure.
Mr. Gilmore? Following up on that, though, we did bid to Roser Park. We did bid the House and Springs. And this was the only vendor we had, which is why we talk about these type of projects. Because if you add the total of them, it's a fair amount of money. But if you take each of the individual projects, they're relatively small. Like, you know, the first one, I think, yeah, they're underneath Valley Drive. I think that's estimated at eleven thousand something. So a lot of the bigger contractors, particularly now that are interested in doing that type of work, they're not going to bid on that type of job.
Why couldn't you combine them?
Pardon?
Why couldn't you not combine them like you have here? Combine three of them and say, okay.
But we'd have to go bid. I'm just saying, I think what you're going to wind up seeing is the same thing. Because the Roser Park project, for example, was a lot bigger project than what these are even in total. Same thing with the House and Springs. Remember, those go by House and all that kind of stuff and everything. We only had the one vendor who responded, but we'd be happy to go out and bid if you'd like.
Oh, aren't we required to? Don't we have an ordinance or something that says that we have to bid something that's over?
No, sir.
What's the limit? Ten thousand?
You have to bid at a hundred thousand.
Huh?
Hundred thousand. Isn't that correct? Rachel?
A state law, yes, sir.
Yeah.
That's just on state law?
No, always. If a project is estimated to cost a hundred thousand more, you have to go bid. For projects that are under that, it is, in essence, your option. We always come to you, and generally we go to bid, if we feel there is a history of vendors who are interested in participating in it. And/or if we know that there are local vendors who may be interested in participating. As Ms. Fiskner indicated, with this type of project, our experience at being is that there, other than UMA who's here, there are no other local vendors who are interested in participating for these type of projects.
If I were in business, I would bid like I bid, like he did, and I hope nobody bid against me. So to keep him honest, we need somebody to bid against him, even if we don't give it to him. You don't have to take the low bid. None that says you have to take the low bid.
That'd be fine. We'll go to bid. I'm just advising council. I think what you're going to see is one bid that comes back.
I hope you're correct. And I'm not the only worker up here. Some of the rest of them may not want to do that, and I'd go along with it. But I still think anytime you get up in big money, you need to bid. Let them out there.
That'd be fine. We'd be happy to go to bid. Mike?
Just out of curiosity, what's the life of a pipe? I know it's probably hard to gauge, but say on the Valley Drive, what would last fifteen years?
Yeah, I would think that would be a sink that they're going to spin cast with about an inch of concrete. It's a ten thousand PSI.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Item three B is the Finance Department. Three B one is discussions of establishing a policy for the release of utility accounts through small balance. Mr. Wetherden?
Well, just as the mayor said, I'm coming to you guys tonight to ask you guys to consider establishing a policy for small balance utility accounts. So what is a small balance utility account? Staff uses that term to refer to any utility account that has a balance of twenty-five dollars or less than twenty-five dollars that has been closed, the final bills have been sent out, and we have tried to collect that balance multiple times, mainly through a second notice. Our current practice for these types of accounts is that we do make several attempts to contact the account holder. We send the final bill. We send the second notice. If we have a phone number or some way to contact an account holder, we absolutely do that. The next thing that we do is we continue to track that balance on that account. If that account holder attempts to open another account, in the coming years after they close it, we will add the amount from the old account to the new account and make them pay that as part of their normal billing. And then periodically, there are accounts that that doesn't happen. So what we do is we bring them to council as a whole and say, here's a listing of all of these small balance accounts that are over a certain period of time old. We have not been able to collect on them. And we ask that you all write those accounts off, essentially remove them from books. I would point out here that is only the practice for those accounts that are less than twenty-five dollars. Any account that has a balance of twenty-five dollars or more, we actually send those to a collection agency. And just for y'all's information, the collection agency charges sixteen percent of any amount that's collected, which they do collect something. So why do we need to update this procedure? It's staff's thoughts that as we continue to see population growth, we will probably see more of these types of accounts. So we would like to establish a more efficient policy now before it gets out of hand, which we don't anticipate getting out of hand, but it, you know, it would be better and more efficient to go ahead and take care of this now. And also, just in general, we'd like to clean up the general ledger, get off any receivables that we're not going to receive, that we think we're probably never going to receive. That'll allow us to basically move over clean data when we go through our future transition and data input plan, which will be an all new accounting system. I did put it on this slide, but I did want to point out that I ran the numbers for fiscal years eighteen and nineteen combined. We're talking a total of thirty-nine accounts here that would meet the definition of a small balance for a total of three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. So if we were to follow our old practice, I would eventually bring those to you and say, hey, we have thirty-nine accounts that are over a certain period of time old. Would you let us write them off? And it would be three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. For fiscal year twenty, it's a total of twelve accounts for a hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. So we're not talking a large amount of money here, but it is receivables, an asset on the books that's never actually going to be received. So what I'm asking is basically, I would like to come up with a policy, bring to you all, that would formalize the procedure of writing these small balances out as an administrative policy. So basically, we would no longer come to you every time and ask you to write those accounts off. We would, you all would pass a policy and the staff would enact. That policy would have a timeframe for when we would write the accounts off. There's a statutory limit of either four or six years. We're still researching that to figure out which one is more applicable. And I'm wondering if you guys have any thoughts on that timeframe. My initial recommendation would probably be just take whatever the state's statutory limit is, codify that in our ordinance, and follow the same thing. So after, if it's four years, we would track it for four years. If we have not collected it yet, it would be written off at that time. And I would like to point out, I already said it, but the policy that I would like to bring to you all at a future date would give staff the authority to write those off as long as we polish the policy that you all approve. So I've kind of already said it, but what action do we need from council? Tonight, if you could just give me concurrence to work on that policy, I will bring it forward at a future date. We'll definitely incorporate any suggestions that you all have. We'll definitely review it for legality. That will go through Brooks' office to make sure we're not breaking any laws. And I'll write it with efficiency in mind so that we no longer have to come to you all every time to get those written off. And that's all I have. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer now.
I have one. And the only way we can get our money is if they open a new account? That's the only way we can get our money?
Well, we do contact them several times and ask them to pay. If it's over twenty-five dollars, we send it to a collection agency, and that's our method of getting the payment back. Currently, if it's less than twenty-five dollars, we can ask them to pay, but there's clearly no consequence because it's not being sent to a collection agency because of the, given the question, if she doesn't accept that debt unless it's over twenty-five dollars. Initially, when I was thinking this, I would, being the finance director, I just wanted those debts off the books. So I was thinking maybe two years. After two years, let's get them written off. A couple of reasons to not do it for two years would be, number one. You know, a lot of these tend to be, let's say, apartments for people who move more regularly. So let's say if they had an apartment in, or a rental house in Perry, they leave and go to Want Robbins, and they leave and go to Centerville, and that lease is up. Three years later, they're back at an apartment in Perry because they're moved for the third time. Hey, we're still tracking it if it's within the four-year limit or the six-year limit, so we can add it to their account at that time. But like I said, if it's over twenty-five dollars, we can't send it on. Under twenty-five dollars, we really don't have a lot of recourse except continually asking them. And then I think after the four to six-year statutory limit, while we could still ask them to pay it, there's no legality behind us making them pay it, so.
So, excuse me. Why would we open a new account for them if we have a past due bound? Why wouldn't we require them to pay the past?
We do currently require them to pay it as long as it's, as long as it's within the statutory.
As you said, you just added it to their bill. I'm like, no, you don't get an account until you pay the money.
And I may admit this, look, I do believe that's how it works, but I can clarify that. And I will, if you guys can hurry moving forward, I would definitely have it on the clear. Make sure that's what's going on.
Question?
I have the same thought, so I agree with that.
Council members? Everybody okay with it, Mr. Manfred?
Yeah, I'm just taking, putting them, we can take it our own. But I think that's the only way, that's the only way we can do it. I think that's the only way we can do it.
Mr. King?
I don't have anything I do. Like, if you want to do the research, come back to us.
Yeah.
How long is that story going to be?
Is that the general consensus as well? I keep asking questions, but what if the statutory limit is made that policy instead of any shorter amount of time?
Bring the policy back to us for review. We would appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three C is the Department of Leadership Services. Three C and one is Citizen Contact Program. Mr. Swan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor Walker and Mr. Gilmore brought this idea to us about setting up a program, especially knowing, you know, we saw during COVID that we have a lot of, many citizens stay home by themselves. And we thought this would be a good added service to what we already provide. The program objectives for the Citizen Contact Program would be to assist citizens and families with aging or challenged loved ones who prefer to live independently. We provide information and resources pertaining to public services already within the city of Perry and provide any emergency, non-emergency response to citizens that express a need. And of course, to help isolate citizens by providing a regular phone contact. Now, to, I guess, to dive in how the program would operate or propose operations, citizens would, someone would nominate a citizen to be involved in the role of this program. Of course, the person that they're nominating or recommending has to acknowledge it and accept and enroll themselves in this program. What we're looking to do is have the courtesy call, place on a schedule, predetermined time, and just check and see if any community or city resources that we can assist in with finding or gaining access to. Check up at this point, you know, after we make repeated phone calls at the designated time, the next step would be to contact that emergency contact listed on their registration form and have, see if you want first responders to go out or that loved one can get it on the phone and just check on their well-being. In detail, just to break it out even further, where the proposed amount of times, three times that we try to make contact with the person in the program, these calls are placed within twenty-minute increments. So if we, you know, we say we want to call you at nine AM, you don't answer at nine, we go to nine twenty-nine for you. And nine, there's no nine sixty, so it's ten. So we would, at that point, we would make a call to that, like I mentioned before, that emergency contact listed on that registration form. And at that, then they would determine if there is an emergency situation, if they want to call nine-one-one, or if they want to have us send an officer for wellness check. And of course, these, let it mention it, and police and fire would, of course, conduct these wellness checks. The courtesy call script is a, you know, basic hello, explain who you are and what program you're with. City of Perry Citizen Contact Program, calling to speak with Mr. Smith. And then you ask, you let them know what the objective of the program is because there's so many scams out there. You want to make sure that they're comfortable and understand who they're speaking with. And then you ask them, is there any resources or assistance that you can help them with that day? Available resources, of course, if there's an emergency, we're going to recommend that they hang up and call nine-one-one. These are a list of some of our Perry services. We've got police and fire for those non-emergencies, those wellness checks, customer service, of course, public works, and leisure services. And some community resources, some of our stakeholders. We have Perry Senior Center, which is attached to Rosa, to the World Center. Then we have the Perry Volunteer Outreach Program, who does a great job of aiding our citizens. And then we have Department of Veterans Affairs. I thought about it. We have a lot of retired veterans that live within the city. So that would be a great resource to add to our list. Consideration, our internal considerations. Now, this program would only be from eight-to-five Monday through Friday. Now, this is my recommendation. We think that it'd be more advantageous for us to extend our hours Saturday and Sunday. Of course, we have to adjust that hours. These phone calls will be coming, will be placed by leisure services staff members. So I just wanted to put that out for conversation. Resources, I wanted to provide a point of contact with all the listed departments. So if we want to call Public Works, Ms. Natalie might be the point of contact where she can explain the services and how to get from point A to B more efficiently than having a leisure services department explain what Public Works does on a daily basis. Technology, as I briefly mentioned before, we have several scams out there, robo-calls and nefarious acts through the telephone that try to trick our citizens into sending their bank information and social security information. So I want to make sure, and we discussed it before, that the caller ID reads the city of Perry. So they're a little more comfortable with answering the phone and understanding that it's us calling to check on them. And I did want to mention that Houston County Sheriff's Department has a similar program that Chief Lynn has expressed there in collaboration with. So they currently check on some of our citizens now. I think they mentioned that many of them are repeat calls. And so I did want to share, just be transparent, that we do have a similar program already out there. I think that this would be more tailored to what the city offers and what we have as far as resources within Perry. And that concludes my proposal for the program. If you have any questions or concerns, I'd be willing to answer.
Council members, questions?
Does the county call the citizens inside the city limits of Perry now?
Yes, sir. If I'm not mistaken, yes, sir. Now, I think it's more of an automated call. It's a robo-call, so, yes, sir. So this will be an actual personal call.
We go consult with them before we do something on hold?
Yes, sir.
So we keep working together and stuff against each other?
Has followed what Mr. Johnson said, if we approve this, would Perry PD still work in conjunction with the county in addition to this program? So? Right. Yes, I guess.
So, Mr. Swan, are you bringing this tonight for us to say, we approve this plan? Or, I mean, and if the council gives a consensus for you to go forward, how long would it be before it would be in operation?
Honestly, I think we can get it out at the first of the month. We can meet with the rest of the departments and line up those points of contact and work out the logistics if you feel that you want to move forward.
I think my next question would be, how are you going to let the citizens of Perry know that the program exists?
Well, we have a wonderful communications department here, and I'm sure that you will assist us with getting the word out of the table. And so would be Facebook, social media, a strategic marketing plan, so.
I think that's one of the issues that we have with the county is that very few people know that it's available. And I think this is going to be, chief, what'd you say, the head, some small number?
Mayor, I believe it was twenty-five, current.
See, they only have twenty-five people that they're actually calling. And I think this will be a service with a live person calling the people here in Perry. I think the number will be far greater for the type of service that we'll be providing to those people living at home.
I think my concern was just that some of these individuals who may truly, truly need this service might not be looking at the city of Perry website or Facebook page or, you know, in social media. So I wondered what other kinds of errands we might have.
Yes, ma'am. I think some of those resources that we listed, they have a wealth of contacts within the community already. So make sure we bring them to the table and ask them to assist with getting the word out.
My governor's office, the citizens, PR.
Yes, ma'am.
Question? So what is the council's preference this evening?
Do you have a concurrence with the council to move forward? I think it'll be a great program. I appreciate you guys taking that on to make it happen.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to hear back from how to get it started up and it's running and see how many people are participating, number one. And then, number two, the type of services that they're needing, and are we really providing those services at this point in time?
Yes, sir.
Follow-up, thank you. Thank you. Three D is the Office of the City Manager. Three D one is selection of pedestrian lighting design for Hampton Court. Ms. Harland?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up from a few weeks ago when we looked at pedestrian lighting options for Hampton Court. This is for sidewalks that will connect the hotels to restaurants and other future developments in that area if pedestrian lighting is needed. And so recently, I met with five managers or property owners of the hotels on Hampton Court, as well as Marketplace Drive. And they, as well as city staff, are of the general consensus that they want to see a more modern aesthetic and lighting design that will complement the contemporary architecture of this area. And so we have it narrowed down to two. The first one is the Marata, and this is a twelve-foot hole with a four-foot base. And here's a couple examples of what it looks like installed. And here's a couple examples of what it looks like installed. And then the other one is the Constitution. They're similar in design and elements, as well as the lighting specifications. Both styles do have the modern look that does blend in with, you know, contemporary buildings and new construction. The Constitution, however, is round, and the Marata is a square shape. And this is what the Constitution looks like at night. And then here's a side-by-side comparison of both of them. That's a five hotel property, and that has, three of the owners or managers prefer the Constitution. And then one of those two properties said he did prefer the Marata. And that owner is building a new hotel and will renovate an existing one. They have the architectural plans to have a third story and redevelop the Hampton Inn. So we're very excited about that. And that owner did say that whatever the city decides to go with, to let him know and send the specs over, and that he will go ahead and do that type of lighting on his property as well. So I just wanted to bring this to you all tonight and see what your preference is as we go through the process of designing the sidewalks and the lighting for this area of Perry.
Councilmember, any thoughts or questions?
Which of these two would we say is most similar to what we kind of already have existing throughout the city, specifically downtown, for example?
These are nothing like we have downtown. The downtown is called the Lexington, and it's a more expensive and more traditional light. You know, if you go out on Courtney Hodges and some of the interstate corridors, then you've got the big giant holes, and those are called Cobra and some other names, and we didn't even, we didn't even look at those because that's more, you know, interstate. This is specifically for pedestrian lighting, for more modern, contemporary architecture. So this is not what you would see downtown.
What's the difference in the cost?
About $150. The Marata is a little bit cheaper than the Constitution, but we don't have the total cost yet because there's freight charges associated, and we have to get the plan and determine how many units, that type of thing. So we're still in the preliminary stages of budgets, et cetera, but it's about $150.
But you're really looking for a preference from us so that you can actually do your forecasting also.
Correct.
I think that's what, I think we're being asked for tonight, if we have a preference of the two, so that you can move forward.
Let me clarify that. What we'd like you to do is choose one of these, and that's what goes into specifications for the project.
Would I like the Constitution?
I do.
We've got three that like the Constitution. Do we need to vote?
No, I like Constitution.
So you like the Constitution, okay.
Dr. Albrecht, that's five, and Riley said, what's cheapest?
Okay, so Marata's a little bit cheaper.
So he gets a lot. So it's five to one, so I assume that you want to move forward with the Constitution.
Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. 3D2 is used for federal money. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Worthington has an item to show you relative to this as a follow-up on the inquiry. I will start off with, as you have noticed in the information I sent to you, you should have in board pack, is that the city will be receiving a certain amount of money. We don't have a defined amount exactly yet, but a certain amount of money underneath the federal American Rescue Plan. One of the things that we do know with that is that it has certain limitations, particularly from the stamp point of new construction or infrastructure, that it is limited to water and sewer. We also are aware, or appears to be, unless there's some type of change, that it can be used for city operating expenditures primarily related to COVID or potential lost revenue. There may be some other type of restrictions or whatever that will let you know, but as a general guideline, that's what we are talking about.
Brady Mitchell?
Uh, Mitchell, Mitchell is estimating it to be approximately $5 million over the timeframe. There also is a cap out on expenditures, which is 2024, I think, December 31st, 2024.
So as Mr. Gilmore stated, the new ARC money is essentially the same requirements as the CARES Act, is what we've been told, with the addition of the two other requirement, or the two other fields, which are paying for water or sewer infrastructure or replacing revenues that we can say, that we can show were in decline because of COVID. On this chart right here, I believe Ms. Peterson had asked for a breakdown of what were our current expenses that could be linked to COVID. For FY '20, we were reimbursed by CARES Act $900,000, but we had a total of around $1.5 million in expenses in FY '20 that we could, that were CARES Act reimbursable. So that left us with those two figures right there, which was around $600,000 unreimbursed. Since the beginning of FY '21, using the same requirements as CARES Act, you can see we have a total there of a certain, of more money, around $200,000. Altogether, if you add our FY '20 and FY '21 unreimbursed COVID-related expenses, we come up to a total of about $815,000, $816,000. I would like to point out that that is through April 9th, 2021. It's that date because that was our last payroll, and most of the FY '21, an overwhelming majority of the FY '21 expenses for COVID that were related to COVID have to do with payroll. So those are folks that are at home because they've been exposed or they have COVID, or those are folks, we actually tracked any extra work that our public works crews have to do as far as sanitizing and even like that, which, as long as it holds true that the CARES Act, the limitations under the CARES Act are still the guidance for ARC money, these will all be reimbursable. So a total of around $816,000 that will go back into the funds. I should have blinked here, put the fund number instead of the fund name. I'm sorry, I'm a comment, I think in numbers, that's the General Fund, Fire Protection, Hotel Motel, Solid Waste, and Storm Hard Money.
Thank you, Mitchell. The Georgia Municipal Association and some of their initial discussions and seminars are recommending that the local governments start thinking about what they're going to do and start preparing to have their documentation set and ready to go, or be ready to adjust depending on what the final regulations are that come from the Treasury Department, federal Treasury Department. The administration's recommendation to you would be that the first use of the funds that come in are to reimburse the funds indicated on this chart here for the COVID costs, whatever those COVID costs may be, through June 1st of 2021. Second use of the funds would be to pay for water and sewer projects relative to infrastructure. One of the things we're taking a look at is to see when the regulations come in, what the effective date is. We are anticipating, similar to some of these COVID costs here, that we may be able to get some reimbursement back on some of the monies we've already paid. As you all are aware of, we have a significant amount of upcoming expenditure, sewer projects, in, primarily in East Perry, but not exclusively. And it would be our intention to go in and use this funding to pay for those costs. If we don't have any actual construction costs that come up to whatever that total amount of money is that we have as we're approaching that deadline date, then as long as the regulations allow, we would go back and use that to reduce some of the debt service for projects that we already have done. For example, we paid through bonds approximately $8 million, $8.2 million for the new water plant. We could possibly get some of that reimbursed back to us to reduce the debt service cost. Those are recommendations to you, and if you are agree with what we'd like you to concur, and then that will be the process that we will start. Once we get the actual final regulations, we would be back to you to give you an update of where we are and what we're able to proceed with or not proceed with.
Questions?
Mitchell, just so I understand, this, these were different funds, but the primary reason these funds were affected is in the area of the payroll?
That is correct, yes, ma'am. The overwhelming eligible expenses that we had for both CARES and ARC money are first time expenses.
Thank you.
If I may, I was following up on one of the other points, too. I have problems, obviously, with the mic here. We did go back, we're not quite sure whether it's okay, but we did go back to check and see about lost revenue and to see if that might be another option as well. Mitchell and I talked about that, Mitchell did the research on that. First thing we determined is that Perry has been extremely fortunate relative to COVID because we have not had any significant major revenue loss for the city. And we are very, very thankful for that. Second part was through there, we determined there could be two areas that might benefit from revenue reimbursement if it's allowed. The first one was for the hotel motel tax, and the second is for court fines because of the municipal court having to be closed down because of COVID. Going in back and following what we anticipate, the general guidelines would be, we went back and compared FY '19 to FY '20, and there was not a significant difference in there. The hotel motel tax, we think, if we allow to do it, we may gain $71,000. I'm not saying that $71,000 is not necessarily a small amount, but when you compare that to the tax amount in FY '19, which was $900,000, you see what I mean? We did not have that significant drop. The second was for municipal court fines. We thought that there might be something more there. What the data indicates is that apparently, based on revenues collected, the COVID had absolutely no effect on the hotel, on the court fines, which I would guess indicates for us that a majority of the revenue that comes from municipal court is from traffic fines, and they were still processed without always having to have court action take place. But bottom lines, we wouldn't be able to make any claim there. And because of that, that's why, not that we necessarily rule that out, but that's why we're recommending to focus on these two areas initially for the money coming.
Mr. Gilmore, the guidance that I've been listening to from the GMA also says the same thing, and, you know, that we need to be looking at the infrastructure as we move forward because that's consistent with the restrictions that are going to be placed because, as my understanding is, they continue to work this way. Really have not had any guideline from the Treasury as of yet, but the indication is that there's going to be, it's going to be very strict in the use of these funds.
Questions, Council? Does Mr. Gilmore have your concurrence to move forward with this type of application to the fund?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore, you have a concurrence, announced concurrence to move forward with your plan on the federal funds that are going to be flowing into the city of Perry. Item 3D3 is review of traffic counts in the downtown district. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your board pack, you have information from me, providing the traffic counts in downtown for the intersections of Washington and Main, Wall Street and Main, Jernigan Street and Main. At each of those intersections, currently, there is a traffic control device, which in layperson's terms means a traffic light. We have run counts on those, and those are provided to you. An overall average, as you can see, in a weekend average. Primarily, you notice that Wall Street has the heaviest traffic volume, not too much of a surprise as far as we're concerned. Washington Street is relatively close, particularly during the week for the overall average, which doesn't surprise us too much at all. And Jernigan Street is not even in the ballpark relative to that, which also is not a surprise, I think, primarily because of its short distance. The administration is recommending to you that you authorize proceeding with the removal of the traffic control devices at the intersection of Jernigan and Main and Jernigan and Carroll. Replace it with a stop sign on Jernigan for both of those streets. These traffic devices cost us money to operate. As I'm sure a number of you have heard, they cause probably even more so extensive frustration, you know, for people who are going in through downtown, particularly when you get into the weekend timeframes, and we just think that this would be the most advantageous. Previously, one of the thoughts was that we need to keep the traffic control device at Jernigan and Main because of truck traffic going to the Interfor plant. Periodically, we'll have some on that, very, very little. We've had very good success with the log trucks moving over on DePaul, which you may remember was our original plant. Now, it seems that if you do have some of the log trucks coming in, they are coming, excuse me, off of Courtney Hodges onto Main and then making a right turn on Jernigan. And you don't have too much of that. And so therefore, our recommendation would be to remove those traffic devices.
Councilmember, comments, thoughts, questions?
You're speaking a four-way stop, so we start on top or just...
No, two-way stop. If you're on Jernigan, you have to stop and put a stop sign. If you're on Carroll or Main, you're free to go. Thoughts?
Well, most of us have sat there for 15 minutes. We absolutely know how that light works. That's a punitive light, I can tell you.
Consensus, Council, to move forward with this plan, is that...
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore, you have consensus. Dr. Albrecht, I think that you're better.
Thank you.
You're welcome, my dear. That's a great suggestion. We'll see how it works. We can always put them back if we have to. Item four, councilmember items. Ms. Diana Grace. Dr. Albrecht?
Mr. Hunt? One little item. Do we have a policy about grass mowers, trucks stopping the vehicles in the street, putting out two cones, go mow the grass, and then moving the block in the street? Somebody's going to run into the back of one of them, maybe sue us and the person who owns the truck.
Now, these are land state matters.
Mostly, I saw one stop on 341 South just while ago coming, and I thought it was one of the lawn mowers. He was loading the fancy Chevrolet car in the back of that thing. So he was a one-time thing, but these mowers are constant.
Unless it's marked from the park, and I don't believe there's a prohibition against that, Mr. Hunt, I'll be having to research it to make sure, but if they're putting cones out, they're, you know, seemingly, they're at least taking an effort for safety. But I think unless it's, I don't go beyond that. I'll have to research. I'll let you know tomorrow.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Hunt? Anything else, Mr. Hunt? No. Mayor Prokhorov, Jim, and Hattie. Ms. Peterson?
Yes, sir. I have concerns about the back of the Comfort Inn along the interstate, the fence that is there, there's like trash inside the fence and dead foliage all around, I mean, it just looks chunky and bad. And I rode, I rode by their double time to make sure that I had the right location. It's that fenced area, the fence along the back of their property looks pretty rough.
Mr. Gilmore?
I don't believe there's anything we can do on that. The cause of that goes back with George DOT, and their contracted cutting, you know, they cut the right-of-way, which they've got every right to do. On the other side of those fences, that's all private property, and we do not have any regulations that I am aware of as to how you have to maintain the back of your property. But we have to research and check this in.
Well, that's unfortunate, we don't have any recourse because it looks terrible, and it's certainly visible from the interstate if anyone comes through Perry.
Would that be something we could work with the Convention and District Bureau to talk with them about cleaning that up a little bit? Would that be some way we could work through that with Comfort Inn? Mr. Gilmore, could we work through the Convention and District Bureau to contact the company?
Oh, I'm starting to make a note here.
And make a recommendation to pass them through?
I'll be happy to do that.
Just a suggestion. At least take some action.
Yeah, I have one thing, COVID in front of me, my house has a 30-hour life, and it completely gone out, and give somebody to replace their life.
Okay. Do you have an address there?
605 Marshall Drive.
I'm sorry?
605 Marshall Drive.
605 Marshall Drive, okay. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Andy, can you put up? What you see up there is a portion of the map primarily focusing, this is just to give you a general idea about the East Perry area. I realize you may be getting tired of me and us constantly talking about the East Perry area, but Mayor and council, it's not going to go away. We'd like to have your consideration, and I'll use, if you don't mind, just this as a reference point on. As you know, we have talked about, and we do have plans for making infrastructure improvements. For example, this is the South Langston Road extension in Sethley. Everybody see where I am with this? Right over here, your mind, right here is approximate layout of, excuse me, the sewer main line, coming down from the Talton Track and going down to the new wastewater treatment plant at the intersection of Mossy Creek and Big Indian Creek. Everybody with me so far? Okay. What we are suggesting to council for you to consider, and you can either come back if you have something for a policy, or you can be comfortable, if you concur about this, we'll be staffed, but it goes back to the anticipated annexations that are going to be coming in in this area. Currently, the city policy is, is that if you have property in the city, then it is the city's responsibility by and large to get water and sewer to that track to serve your developer. We do not have a stated policy that way relative to annexations. Now, historically though, what we have done is that if council approves an annexation, that going along with that is the extension of providing water and sewer to the track, which I think makes complete sense. What we are proposing to you tonight to consider, you don't have to make any decision on this, is that we operate from a standpoint that it will not be recommended to you, or you may take the position that you are not going to accept or consider annexations of policy that do not have a workable plan for the extension of sewer service to it, okay? Now, originally, when we had talked about upcoming development, which is triggering this, is that in the past, the regulatory body, Environmental Protection Division, had allowed what is called pump and haul, which means, and that's what was done with, for those of y'all who are on council, with Wood Eagle, up at the intersection of Santa ford Road and Lake Joy, when that came into the city. The pump and haul simply means that a developer puts in the basic infrastructure in the development, there is a plan for providing a connection of that development with the sewer pipe finish stations, whatever may be required for that, to get it into the city system, and then down to the wastewater treatment plant. If we were going to have annexations, and we do have this master plan set, we anticipated, maybe not necessarily whole lot, but this would be a possible option relative to sewer service for annexation requests. We have been advised in the last two months, I think it is, that EBD no longer allows or permits the pump and haul. They do have three other options. First option is that the particular development, or area around the development, however that's going to be done, can get, go through a relatively quick permit process and dispose of the waste effluent in a prepared ground or field, which is called land application system. The second option is that a development or developments can have a portable packaged treatment facility, which is in essence a little wastewater treatment plant facility, and then the developments can connect to those, that plant, and then the effluent after it's treated is taken up and disposed of in the normal way. Or the third is that the developments can come in and make a connection, some way, shape, or form, to the city's current infrastructure, and then it's connected and goes to the wastewater treatment plant. The problem for the city with those three options is that they can wind up being very expensive. And particularly in New Orleans, I'm sorry, I live in the back, so particularly East Perry, you can, you can have infrastructure put in to take care of a particular development when the master plan talks about it going another way. Everybody with me? So in other words, you could have, you would have to do a plan for upgrades to an existing system to bring the wastewater over, and then once our new system is set and running, it's not going to be used anymore. It's overcapacity, okay? As an example, I could put, there's a piece of property down here, give you a reference, this is Saddle Creek Road, everybody with me here? You have potentially a development that they want to come in here, and they're able to annex into the city. Everybody with me? So it's not an issue about, anything else has to be done, they could legally come in and apply for annexation, okay? For this particular tract of property, in order to do that, if we're going, they would either have to provide some way, some acceptable area of the soils for the land application system, they would have to provide some type of property, or the city would have to do that. The developer would have to provide the money for the packaged treatment plant, or the city would have to do that, or have to pay for the connection coming over into our existing system. In order, in this example, in order to serve this particular tract, you have to come back in with the length, but also upgrade all these services, everybody with me, coming through these existing subdivisions to take care of that load of wastewater. And then once this facility and infrastructure is done over here, eventually there'll be some connection, but it'll all be going back over the other way. So in other words, the developer or the, my concern is taxpayers or ratepayers that pay for that additional cost on something that's not part of the long range. So what we are proposing to you to talk about, if you'd like to, or at least right now, just kind of consider individually, is that city will not consider, like, or you could make an application, but the city, or certainly stat-wise at least, would not recommend, and if council establishes a policy, would not do, any type of annexations coming in that do not have an approved wastewater treatment process plan. The underlying reason for that is I don't think it should be the responsibility of the city, either the city's taxpayers or the city's rate holders, to pay for individual developments that is going to have infrastructure that won't be usable in a later period of time. In other words, administratively, we don't believe there should be developers that are driving what the city winds up doing relative to its growth, okay? Kind of better example, but a bit extreme, okay? I own this parcel right here, I want to annex it into the city, and somehow, okay, I advise a way to make a connection to tie it up here. Everybody with me so far? Okay? It would be extremely expensive to run infrastructure costs out there to take care of that facility to benefit a developer. Now, when we talk about an acceptable plan, I'm talking about an acceptable plan that environmentally would work, good chance of being permitted, makes sense, and the taxpayers or the rate holders don't have to pick up the cost on that, or no more than they normally would have to do for some reasonable money. So for example, going back on this item here, it may be that the owner or the builder of this parcel makes an arrangement with this property owner down here to have a land application process. We have that as a written agreement, developer says it'll pick up the cost for that, then the administration's recommendation would be, that's an acceptable wastewater treatment plan, it's not costing us anymore than what we would normally be paying, so we would be agreeable to that, and of course, there'd be a written agreement and so on. So let me give you an example the other way of where that is done. Remember, we talked about the pump and haul of a Wood Eagle subdivision, but the other part of that pump and haul was the developer had to pay for the cost of the infrastructure of the sewer main, running down Santaford, going down to collect to 41, south down on 41 until it came to our first lift station. Mr. King has Bynum Graves, just like you may remember, that was the arrangement that we had, okay? The developer had to pay all that cost. The city agreed to reimburse the developer for those costs out of cat fees collected from Wood Eagle subdivision. Plan had and was approved by the city, met all our requirements. And that's why I want to emphasize that what we're talking about here with this proposal should not be interpreted that the city is anti-growth, because that's not its intention. What it is intended to do is to provide equitable distribution of costs that are coming up from developments that may not be readily served with current existing infrastructure. Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore?
Where is the new treatment plant supposed to go? Show it to us on the map, please.
The new treatment plant is going to be somewhere down here, it's going to be located on the Harris Track, I believe, which is owned by the House and County Development Authority. We already are finalizing discussions with them for them providing the property, and we will take some of their waste coming from their facility as it comes online, subject to certain conditions.
One other question. How long is spreading this waste over land going to be allowed by the government?
I do not know.
We don't want to contaminate hundreds of thousands of them.
Right, right. In general terms, once it is permitted by EBD, it is good to go until there is some other alternative that would work, okay? So for example, on this here, you would have that land application system operating until the city's in a position to get already quitting in the lines or whatever the connections are.
Yeah, I think the reality is, everybody, there's a couple of things. Number one, if it's already in the city, we're going to, we're talking exclusively around annexation requests, not stuff that's already inside of the corporate limits of the city of Perry. And we're not going to slow up on developing the line that we've proposed to go, and we're going to do that as quickly as we can. So we're not talking about forever here, we're talking about an interim period until we have the infrastructure in place to take care of it.
That's exactly right. Because remember, you all have already approved the general concept, plan, how to proceed. You already have talked about processes relative to funding, you know, that infrastructure. You have already indicated, like up here, Talton Track, on how that's already going to be addressed.
And your point is well made on the Talton Track, because that was not annexed into the city, that was not an annexation request. We did that because that is in the city limits of Perry at this point.
That's right. Talton Track has been in the city for at least, what, eight years?
Ten years.
Ten years?
Do we have one of those land application systems in existence anywhere in the city of Perry now?
No. It's historically we have not needed.
Would you like to think about this proposal for time, so you can digest it? Give us some thought, ask your questions, let's go look at that. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, how are you doing, everyone? First and foremost, I want to say thank you, thank you to Jesus Christ, because he knows all of the different protectors that are living here.
Ma'am, if you're going to speak to us, could you tell the city who you are and give us your address?
My name is Chris Sparks, and I want, first and foremost, thank you, Jesus Christ, for all he has done for me, loved me, protected me, and cared for me. But I have some questions. How come grocery, how come grocery is increasing? The prices are increasing, but we're putting in so much tax return, I mean, it's not a tax return, but taxes. I mean, it's not only tax return, but taxes, you get what I'm saying? We're putting so, so much, I missed something, um, in taxes. We're putting in a lot of taxes. Where's the money going? Where, why, why is everything rising up when we're putting it on taxes? That's what I don't understand. And I feel like we should help the people, help the people around the world, help them. And I feel like nothing's being done. I mean, I'm talking about homeless people, I'm talking about, I'm talking about everybody. Everybody needs help. I'm speaking for the people. If I had it, if I had it, I would give back. And I've been trying, you know, I've been trying to get my music out there, you know? Stay was on my mind, and if I had it, I would give back to them, and that's that. Because Jesus tells me what I need to do, and I follow. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for reading. Ms. Newby.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, I just wanted to bring out just some thoughts and consideration for you, relevant to our public hearings.
As a preamble to that.
Yes, sir.
Council members, we've been talking about this, and we thought that this would be a good opportunity for us to talk about public hearings. Since we have been together as this, we really haven't had any type of, what I would characterize as contentious, you know, public hearings have been very friendly. The only time, there's only been a couple of the whole time that I've served on council that have been contentious. I can, Mr. King's had several more than I have, given his time on PMZ. But we had talked about, this would be a good time for Ms. Newby to kind of bring us forward as to what's the purpose of public hearings, what are the behaviors that are there, and some recommendations as we move into hearing a couple of public hearings on the Fourth of May. Ms. Newby, thank you for willing to talk to us about that.
Yes, sir, thank you. So with that, just the first thing that I'll point out is, just a matter of decorum, that any of the comments or questions that are presented as part of the public hearing should be addressed to either the chairman or the mayor. They shouldn't be asking questions directly of a particular member. And the chairman and mayor can then, I mean, if the answer is readily known, can answer the question. But one thing that we want to be careful of is to not just give a response or an answer to feel like you have to respond just because you're being asked a question if we don't know the answer, or if it's something that we need to go and look further into. We definitely don't want to respond just because you feel the pressure to and give out misinformation or inaccurate information. When it comes to actually moving forward with a hearing and thinking about how we're going to be voting, there are a few things that I would just recommend for you to remember. The first is if you were to have any type of financial conflict of interest that you want to make sure that you recuse yourself from voting. The, you know, it's part of the voting process. What you're doing is ensuring that the administrative process is followed, and that's something that we're reviewing and making sure that going forward, that we are following all of those processes correctly. When you're voting, though, you shouldn't allow the number of people that are present for a matter, or who those people are affect how you vote. Because you need to make sure that whatever decision, however you vote for a matter, that it's something that you can defend in court, and that you personally would be able to state under oath what the reason is for how you voted on a particular matter. I know that these aren't pleasant things to think about, but I mean, this is part of public service and the legalities of that. The last thing that I would remind you when you are voting, and when you're, when the hearing is going on, is to focus on what is the actual issue before you? What is the issue of the hearing? Because a lot of times, you can lose sight of what the issue is that you're supposed to be voting on. And with that, I mean, look at the, remain focused on the factors that you're supposed to consider, and what are the criteria that you have to balance the issue against? Is it a rezoning issue, or is it a development plan for approval? Because those are two very different things, and they have different sets of criteria that you're supposed to consider when voting on each. So I would just always make sure that you're competent of, you know, what is this particular application for? Those are just the highlights that I can think of, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. If it's specifics, I can, you know, research further if we don't have the answer for you tonight. But I just thought that that might be helpful for you to be thinking about with some upcoming public hearings.
I think your comment relative to what are we considering is extremely important, because in some of the public hearings that I have sat through, it becomes very blurry in the eyes of the citizen as what they're talking about. We may be talking about a decision on annexation, but they want to talk about terms and conditions relative to developments, which has nothing to do with, that will be addressed at a later date with community development. Our, our decision is, are you going to annex it or not? And then that's our decision, not subject to all these other things or that you might be getting into when you're talking about the development of the property itself. So thank you for bringing that up.
Council members, questions relative to that?
I have a statement, one thing you should, I appreciate you bringing it out, because it's very important. As Milwaukee remember, when I was on fans on, and I got sued personally, you know what I mean, and like you were saying, it's very valuable that you make sure you understand the clarity of what being said, just like you said, before you make a statement. And sometimes the public will zoom on one council member, and just like to shake her, I know, I had that happen since. I've been a city councilman in that. I said, well, you need to talk to the city manager, or you need to talk to the mayor, because I get it off my back right away. Because see, sometimes people want to be pinpointed, and they'll come back, so, Real King said so and so. Real King, everybody know Real King. He done made the statement, and then I am up the creek without a collar, you know what I mean? And so they're being careful at how you handle, how you speak to people, because just to sure, they will come back at you and saying that you're part of the city, and you done made a statement. And I appreciate that. Thank you so much for that. I think it's important that we count it, so, and like you're saying, I think before we make a decision, we need to get clarification of what are we, as mayor said, what are we going to vote on? Why are we going to make the public vote? What is going forward to that we be clear? Just like the mayor said, it could be too internet going on at the same time. We're going to be voting on something else, but the public thinking about something else. We need that clarity. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Newby, anything else this evening?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Smith, anything for us this evening?
Nothing, sir.
I can find Mr. Department head in stamp items. Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Worthy, anything else this evening?
That's right.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing, sir.
Ah, yes, sir, one time. In light of the recent tragedy in Brooklyn Heights, Minnesota, Mr. Fillmore asked that I kind of give y'all an overview of our training and use of tasers. Eric Placeform's been using them for about 20 years. Every officer that is issued and carries one is certified in the use through the approved certification program from Axon International, this is the developer of the device. Annual retraining is part of our use of force, annual training. In light of the recent event, I directed all supervisors to have discussions with the officers about that event, about reiterating our carry policy and our engagement policy, handling, inspecting, placement of the weapons on their duty gear, because they're carried in a very specific way to try to prevent something similar happening. They're, they're carried on their non-dominant side, so if your right hand is carried on your left side, it's carried in a cross crawl configuration, so that you still use it with your, if your right hand, you still use it with your right hand, but you would reach across your body to put your hand on the weapon. So we reiterated that, inspected everybody, make sure they were all carrying right. And I got, I had the following staff sit down with the command staff and review our policy, and try to see if we were current, that we didn't make any changes, we don't feel like we do, we're following all the guidelines. And then I asked them to put together a roll call training that what could be done in short periods of time with people while they're on duty, that would also incorporate emergency handling and simulator. So that's what we had on that. I just wanted to give you an update at city managers' request.
Thank you, chief. Any questions?
Chief, I know you've heard of the burn gun. You've seen it advertised on television. If you, if you watch Hannity on Fox, he's advocating that the police department must go to that rather than a taser. It's a non, what you call it when you shoot to kill? It's a non-lethal.
Anyway. This gun, I'm not familiar with that. A taser is a non-lethal weapon as well, but I don't know about a burn gun.
Please, if you have the opportunity, look it up. It may be, or may not be, something we'd be interested in looking into. I know it would probably be a new expense for the city, but it is non-lethal.
Yes, sir, we, we constantly research new items that come out. Fact, there's one that's included in our budget request. It's a different non-lethal weapon, but I'm not familiar with this one. I'll research it between now and tomorrow.
Thank you.
B U R N, burn.
B Y R U N, I believe.
B Y, okay.
On the burn gun, it'll knock a person down, but it will not kill them.
A taser won't either.
Probably that's in 99% of the time, everything's got a little bit of.
Thank you, chief, for that, David.
That's all, sir, thank you.
Chief Parker?
Nothing to deny, sir.
Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir, I wanted to update mayor and council. Currently, we have just installed two information racks, both here at the entrance of the Perry Event Center, as well as the World Center. They will, they contain basic city information, such as utility bill explanations, the current citizen report for fiscal year 20, as well as the NASTON on that we just did with code compliance and code, excuse me, community development. And it also has event information on it as well. So these will be stocked, and the information will be swapped out periodically. But that's just another way for us to get the word out about city information that is non-technical.
Great, thank you. Mr. Swan?
No, sir.
Ms. Ditts, anything this evening?
Just have a reminder that Public Works will be hosting the spring cleanup event next Monday through Friday, April 26th through the 30th.
Thank you. Ms. Warren? Ms. Hart, anything additional this evening?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Council, any questions or concerns before we adjourn? I'd like to remind everybody that our next meeting will be tomorrow night here in the events center at 5:00 for the free council meeting, and at 6:00 for the regularly scheduled city council meeting. All of our meetings are open to the public, and we invite your interest and participation. If there's nothing else to come before us this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm a second.
The motion is second, all the clerks and indicators are raised right hand. We stand adjourned for tomorrow at 5:00.